Well, good evening. It is seven o'clock and time for us to begin this meeting of the Woodstock City Council. I want to welcome each and every one of you. We're pleased that you have decided to join us over this public meeting this evening. As we get started, I would like to make a few brief announcements. I know many of you have heard these three times. I apologize for that, but there are those who haven't been here. And the first announcement is that if you would like to follow along with tonight's meeting, probably the easiest way to do so is to pick up a copy of the agenda at the small table by the doorway. That will help you to know what's going on in terms of businesses being acted by this body. Second announcement is that we do operate under what is considered to be a consent calendar or agenda. That means that all items that remain on that consent calendar or agenda are considered under a single motion and a single vote. To members of the council, we should have an item separately discussed and voted upon. They simply make that request known and it will be removed from the consent calendar. Likewise, we also invite members of the public to identify items that they would like to have separately considered and voted upon. If a member of the council concurs with the request from public, then that too would be removed from the consent calendar. Otherwise, again, all items that remain on the consent calendar are considered under a single motion and a single vote. Finally, it is a tradition of this body to invite public comment. We do so in two formats. The first is under floor discussion, at which time we invite members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the evening's agenda. Again, items not on the evening's agenda would be considered for floor discussion. And then certainly, as we consider the consent calendar or any items appropriately removed from that calendar, we would invite public comment at that time as well. If you would like to address the city council tonight at the appropriate time, we would invite you to the podium. Ask that you would please, if you are willing, to state your name and address for purpose of the record and then make whatever comments that you would like. Any questions on those announcements this evening? Any questions? There are no questions then. We will officially call this May 17th meeting of the Woodstock City Council to order and ask the clerk, please call the rule. Cindy?
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilwoman Larson.
Here.
Councilman Saladin.
Councilman Storzinski.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Present.
Councilman Sherman.
Here.
Mayor Sack.
Here. Records should reflect then that six out of the seven city council members are present and participating. We do therefore have a floor and it is appropriate for us to proceed in that regard. As we do, I would ask the clerk to please verify that the agenda before us this evening is a true and accurate reflection of the published agenda. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, that being the case, if people's business is due later properly before us. As we begin tonight, then we move first to floor discussion. And this is one of those times when we have a rather bittersweet duty, obligation, but certainly honor. And that is for us to be able to provide a proclamation honoring an individual of our city staff, specifically our administration, who is going to be retiring. I trust that many of you have heard that Police Chief Robert Lowen of the Woodstock Police Department has made an important life decision. I shouldn't say just he has made that decision, but he and his wife Deb have made that decision jointly. And while it is a very sad thing for the city of Woodstock because we are indeed honored by the fact that the chief devoted more than 10 years of his public service to the city of Woodstock and our police department, but also has done what I think all would agree has just been an incredibly stellar professional job in that role. And so it is with a great deal of pleasure that we say to the chief, "Thank you. We commend it for its service." But we also want him to know and Deb to know that we're sad to see you leave. We know however, that you have contributed significantly to our community for which we are incredibly grateful. And we want you sincerely to enjoy each and every day of your retirement. So at this particular time, council, I do have a proclamation for our consideration without objection. As given, then at this time, I'm going to ask Councilman Turner and Councilman Thompson, if you don't mind joining me over to the podium, along with the chief and Deb. Well, at this time, it's my distinct honor to present and to read this proclamation into the record. It says, "Proclamation honoring Chief Robert Lowen." Whereas Chief Robert Lowen came to Woodstock in 2005 as a seasoned law enforcement professional, imparting valuable wisdom and experience with every new idea offered or program instituted. And whereas, over the next 10 years, Chief Robert Lowen implemented and expanded numerous community policing initiatives that lawfully served the residents of Woodstock. Among them, Permanent Beat Officer Program, K-9 Officer Program, Coffee with the Chief, and Coffee with the Merchants, Senior Citizen Call-In Program, AARP Driver Safety, Drug Take Back with 24/7, Med Return Drop Off, Voice Scouts of America Explorer Post, College Intern Program, Increased Community Service Officer, and Bicycle Patrols, Neighborhood Watch Program, and Number One Placement in the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. And whereas, ably assisted by Deputy Chiefs John Lee and H. Sargeant, Chief Robert Lowen supervised a staff of 37 sworn officers, as well as detectives, telecommunications, records clerks, community service officers, seasonal school crossing guards, and administrative personnel. And whereas, while facing every type of law enforcement challenge with patience, tolerance, fairness, and integrity, Chief Robert Lowen also demonstrated significant leadership as a chili cook-off master, frequently exhibiting understated and widely appreciated humor. And whereas, few positions command as much respect from both residents and coworkers as does the title Chief of Police, and few individuals have performed the duties of that office with as much professionalism, intelligence, character, and heart as has been shown to Woodstock by Chief Robert Lowen. Now therefore, we proclaim that the city council, the city of Woodstock, on behalf of all citizens of Woodstock, thanks, congratulations, commends Chief Robert Lowen for faithfully serving the residents and businesses of the Woodstock community for over a decade, providing valued guidance to every employee and safety and security to every citizen with ultimate professionalism, abundant charm, and goodwill, and wishes him the very best of health and happiness in his well-deserved retirement year. So approved and adopted by the Woodstock City Council this May 17th, 2016. Chief, we cannot begin to thank you enough. Congratulations. Certainly going to give the chief the opportunity to say a few words and then we're going to continue with a couple more presentations and we'll be sure to give you lots of opportunities for pictures. Okay? Great. Chief?
Quite a far gone. As the manager would say, "The filter's off," so I can say. You haven't gotten the last check, chief. You know, thanks mayor, for the kind words and that. I really did enjoy working here. Probably one of the hardest decisions I've made to retire. I need glasses before I need a walker and...
Hi, hi, token.
Elevators and stuff like that. That was the time. But I think Councilman Turner was here my whole stay. Certainly the mayor has been. Just appreciated the city council. You know, at times, we didn't see eye to eye. You just didn't get the drift of parking tickets and tinted windows and things like that. But you know what? We worked it out. And you know, I feel pain when you take... You get criticism in the city council and the mayor that many guys have some personal agenda or something like that. And I just know that's not the case, that you're really a professional board and council and constantly keep your eye on the ball. And I really appreciate that. And I've had two great city managers with Tim and not like Roscoe. True professionals, put together an exceptional management team. One of the things I most appreciated, you know, when my friends in the business are taking layoffs and furloughs and things like that, these guys kept the ship full. And nobody lost their job, nobody lost any day's work. We did it by attrition. That was really good. You know, Roscoe is tremendously supportive and encouraging to me and recognizes all our good things. You know, for my police department, somewhere here tonight, my coworkers, couldn't be more proud of, you know. When you get calls from attorney-in-law and the state's attorney's office or "can I kindly help?" Or that these people have a tough job to do. But what really rings true is they treat everybody like they're hinting at them. They're driving their Mercedes-Benz or if they're tearing their Balmin's in a plastic bag. Thousands upon thousands of interventions that these guys have every year for the few complaints that we hear about it is just phenomenal. You know, over these years, I don't think we've had any kind of lawsuits, use of force, real nonsense that our police department got involved in like a lot of outfits. Truly a professional bunch of people. You know, before I forget, I've got a couple fans for my Coffee with the Chief program here tonight that have just been incredible following and just a really good time. One other thing, the police department resolves a lot under Jeff Parsons doing there. Virtually every major trend that we've had, these guys have one way or another solved it. You know, the patrol officers doing the initial preliminary and you tap this following up. They just do a great, great, great job. This police department has the respect across the county and across northern Illinois as a professional outfit. Just makes me proud like a father. Yeah, that's what I guess a grand father, not only somebody. And I'm just truly delighted that Chief John Lee will be able to take it forward, kick the tires a little bit and bring on the best of fruition. You know, my fellow department heads, our city employees, you know, take it for granted so many times that the water flows, as you've said before, the toilets are flushed, streets get plowed and redone, buildings get built. Couldn't be a better professional crew that works well together. They ask me for something that gets done, I ask them for something that gets done. And you know, the little humor thing, they do put up with my humor that borders an obnoxiousness at some times. They forgive me for that. Lastly, my wife here, you know. She constantly walks me back away from the ledge when I come home, pulling any hair I can grab out of my hat about tinted window tickets or parking tickets or something or other. But Debbie has always been there for me for 39 years and brings a heart. I've had a 45-year career in law enforcement. If I had to do all over again, I'd do the same thing, but good. Have a front row seat, as they say, the greatest show on earth. And I will truly miss it. I'll stay a little bit involved and I'd do it all over again. And also, like they say, I won't miss the circus, I'll miss some of the clowns.
All right. We certainly want to extend our sincere appreciation to Deb as well. We know full well that serving as a city employee, whether we're in public works, whether I'm in the police department or anyplace else, it is a 24-hour-a-day job, 365, 366 days a year. And the fact of the matter is that the families are frequently sacrificing because the spouse has to be away due to service to the public, to the city. And so we are incredibly grateful, Deb, for the fact that you were willing to put up with all of those countless hours that Bob, chief, had to dedicate to the city of Woodstock and our residents. But we know, just as the chief has mentioned, that your support at home and frankly, to so many other events here, not the least of which was baking all those goodies for the Coffee with the Chief, has been above and beyond the call of duty. And so we want you to know how much we appreciate and how grateful we are to you and to the family for supporting not just his time in Woodstock, but his career as a police officer. We are understanding that that's sometimes a little bit of a nerve-wracking, frightening frankly, position in which to be. And so we know that you have been stalwart for chief. And we now wish you all, both of you and your family, the very, very best as you move forward into his retirement. So please accept this small token of our appreciation. It's very small compared to what we know that you have committed, but we want to expand our appreciation. And now, chief, as I think you know, it's our tradition to celebrate and to present something of the city to the retiring department heads. And so we provide that to you at this time. For those of you, I don't know if the chief wants to open it right now, but for those of you who don't know, we have a small replica of the clock that is in Sospa Centennial Park over here, just off of the square. And so, you know, it may sound a bit strange, but fact of the matter is that life is full of time. And so we have a choice as to how we spend that time. And we're grateful that you spent time with us. You have truly, truly set a standard of integrity and professionalism and public service that all of us should emulate. Thank you. Oh, yes. If you don't mind, we're going to do some photographs. We'll let you off them right off here. Once again, our best wishes to chief and Deb. It is a bittersweet thing for us, but as we move from one chief, we also have an opportunity to recognize another incoming chief. And so we are incredibly honored and pleased that Deputy Chief John Lee has made the conscious decision to serve this community and its residents as the chief of police. And the process was concluded recently. He went through a thorough vetting process. But we are incredibly happy and proud of the fact that our own Deputy Chief John Lee is going to be our incoming police chief in the city of Woodstock. Please join me in congratulating and thanking him. Now, he's not quite official yet. We will have a kind of official change in of the guard, as it were, with the swearing in, et cetera. But certainly, we could not be in better hands in the past or in the future as we look to these two fine leaders. And as well, we want to extend our sincere gratitude and pride in our professional police department at all ranks. So thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
I have to say that when Chief Lowen was sworn in as the new police chief, he replaced someone who had retired. And I looked at Chief Lowen and went, "He's older than the guy retiring." So at least we got it right this time of getting John. John looks...
You get to argue to add that commentary. Now, before you argue, I'm going to ask you to help us recognize another employee. We are very, very pleased that we have announcements and advancements or breadth of... Excuse me, a recognition that is very, very important. And that is that Rob has been, for a long time, involved in fleet maintenance for the city of Woodstock and Public Works Department. But Rob Lance has been promoted now to superintendent of the fleets. And so Rob is here. And we are very, very happy and proud of the work that you have done. And we want to take just a moment to congratulate you on your promotion, Rob. We are proud of you. Certainly a testament to your skills, your ability, your professionalism, that everyone recognized that you had the talent to move up into this leadership position. We're grateful that you've decided to continue with the city and to take this on. We wish you well in that new role. So thank you so much. And Allison, is that right? Angela? Very good. It was close, started with Angela's with him tonight. And so we thank you as well. So thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. That takes us then to other parts of floor discussion. So at this time, I want to invite any members of the public who would like to address the city council on any item this evening not on the agenda to come forward to the podium, if you would like to do so, make whatever conversation you would like, and then we'll go from there. Joe?
Good evening. My name is Joe. And the first item I'd like to address is actually that part I just participated in. According to your agenda, any person wishing to address the city council must approach the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and provide their name and address for the record. I share Attorney General Madigan's opinion in that an address is not required in order to speak to a public body. And I would respectfully ask that you take a more passive tone in that statement.
I'm sure that if you will look at the tape that you're making tonight, you would remember that I said, "If you are willing to do so."
I do. I do. And I appreciate that.
I agree that we need to change the written verbiage, but that is the language that I use at every meeting.
Okay. I appreciate that. I want people to be more involved. And I don't want them to look at an agenda and think, "What if I give my address and identify myself and suffer retaliation?"
We will certainly make sure that that is changed. I apologize for that. But again, my commentary has been, and has been for almost two years now.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Completely agree. Thank you for that, for that. Questions about home rule? I was curious about the methodology. I've submitted requests and haven't got what I feel are satisfactory answers. How are the gains in those limited areas that are going to be a canvas? How are those calculated against the losses and the population in general in the rest of the city?
Frankly, that's not something that we are in a position to answer completely and thoroughly. That's up to the U.S. Census Bureau, who is the body that conducts census for the United States.
And they unfortunately won't talk to me because they say that they have a contract with you folks, with the city. Do you have a contact, if you have a contact with someone I can speak to, I'd be glad to take another run at it.
I'm going to refer you at this time to your city manager. And I'm sure that he'll try to do his best to answer very specific questions.
Thank you. In the last meeting, in the section regarding the Downers Grove-style policy, you discussed potential emergency provisions for some aspects of the proposed policy. Why wouldn't you consider emergency provisions regarding the referendum? In other words, why not allow the policy to be implemented as it stands with the addition of provisions to care for emergency situations?
I believe that the resolution that is going to be considered at the future meeting does allow for emergency considerations relative to particular increases of any tax that might exist. And so we know that there are times when that might be even necessary. And so that is where that exception might occur.
So there's no interest in the petition and referendum process with the exception of some emergency...
That's correct, for the reasons that you heard at the last meeting.
Okay. Very good.
The discussion from the last time, I believe, captured the essence that referendum is a continual option for us. We could pass a referendum at the next meeting for some reason if we decided to at that time. So there's... The ability always exists. And so we just made a determination that we are not going to say, you know, this body... My interpretation of it was that we did not set a threshold to say that, you know, that we're automatically going to do it with, you know, X percent something, okay? The ability to do it always exists.
I realize the ability always exists. But again, what I'm hopeful for is for people to be more involved. And I think we look out here, this is actually more people than you might normally see in many cases. But to get people to come to a meeting, participate in a petition and vote would be a strenuous exercise. So I would imagine it would take quite an issue to bring them to that.
And we've had that occur?
We have. We have. So I'm... Again, the point I'm making is if we had the opportunity for the petition and the referendum, with the exception to the emergency thing, it's just an item to consider.
I think we would want to draw attention to the fact that we actually agreed with a public hearing. And I would suggest that a public hearing is probably a more beneficial opportunity to interact than in fact a referendum would be. And again, we don't keep saying referendum. What we're referring to is an advisory referendum.
Right. Right.
And of the, what, two? How many home rule communities, Roscoe, 200 plus?
200 plus.
And how many have a policy currently?
Just the one.
Just the one?
Mm-hmm.
I would contend that we are being responsive to the concerns of a vocal, passionate, but small number of residents, okay? In trying to make sure that we follow, we give due consideration to being responsive to their needs and everybody's needs. And, you know, we, as I said last time, I share the same goals with you. I got my property tax bill this week too. I'm not happy.
Right. Right. Yes. Ditto. My final question is, on the city site and on the agenda, you state proceedings of the city council meeting are being audio recorded only to aid in preparation of the minutes and are not retained as part of the permanent record of the city. What medium are those recordings made? Do you know on hand?
I would ask the clerk to respond to that.
They're recorded on flash drive.
Okay. And why do you choose to destroy them rather than keep them?
Because they are the property, if you will, of the city clerk. The minutes are proprietary. Our body does not truly approve minutes. We accept the minutes because the minutes, as any clerk of a legal body, are proprietary. The minutes then are given to us. The recording there is to assist the clerk in providing an accurate record of the meeting in the form of written minutes.
So there is the Illinois Local Records Act, 50ILCS205, that requires that record disposal certificates be issued before destroying the record?
Correct. I'll ask the attorney to refer to that.
That's right. But not everything constitutes a record that needs to be retained. And it's been the position for a number of years that those are... Those are... The record are the minutes. So once the minutes are prepared, those are just the equivalent of drafts or notes.
Would it be too much to ask to take another look at that? Because I don't know that you can make the determination which records are not eligible for the local records act. And I'd ask you for your answer to that. I'm just sort of rhetorical question if you take another look at that.
I'll take it as a rhetorical question. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Additional members of the public wish to address the city council on any item not on the evening's agenda. Bill?
My name is Bill Badges. I have five to handle lately. Lately, people's coming around and I've been getting in, trying to sell electricity. I was talking to all the ways out there. And these people come every week. Why can't anything be done about them?
What are they trying to sell?
Electric.
Electricity?
Yes.
Do you want to respond to that, Roscoe?
Yeah, the city does not allow for solicitation or, or solicitation by private sector companies. We do allow for nonprofits, so if you give us the contact information, we'll be glad to follow up with the companies to let them know if they're not allowed to do that.
All right. Let's have a ask for our card.
That will be great.
Thank you, Bill.
I've actually had a car in my house too. They told me, they told me they have a permit, actually. Sorry, Bill. They said, that's not likely.
Thank you, Bill. We'll try to follow up. Thank you. Additional members of the public wish to address the city council on any item not on the season's agenda? Final opportunity for members of the public to address the city council under floor discussion this evening. There be no further request from members of the public then. I would turn to members of the council and see if you have items that you would like to have brought forward to the body this evening at their floor discussion.
I'll just remind everybody that the arts space event is happening starting tomorrow, so the schedule is probably, it's on the website, I assume. There's public, public opportunities during the day tomorrow and in the evening, and I'm not sure about Thursday, I think.
Thursday morning?
Is there a public opportunities in the morning?
Yeah.
So the schedule, I think, is on the website, and that's an opportunity to find out how the arts can be better incorporated and supported within the city and possibly in terms of the square and the old courthouse. So we appreciate the, the help from the McHenry County Community Foundation to get that study done, and I'm hopeful, hopeful that that will be a fruitful process.
Very good. Thank you. Any other items that council elect to raise, question or comment, under floor discussion? All right. There be no further items for floor discussion then this evening. That takes us to our consent calendar. A motion for concurrence would be in order. Someone?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Turner, second by Councilwoman Larson. It is a motion for concurrence currently for all items B, all items B through items E seven, all items B through items E seven. Councilor, I would turn to you and ask if you have any specific items that you elect to have removed from the consent calendar. You want to have any items that they would like to have removed? There be no request from council then to remove any items from the consent calendar? I would turn to members of the public and see if you have any requests for any items to be removed from the calendar. Second opportunity for members of the public to request a specific item be removed from the consent calendar. Carol?
I don't have to go up there?
No.
I was just saying, I'd like to hear discussion on number six, the facade improvement for Benton Street.
All right. We can certainly raise that. Let me ask, any councilmembers, if there's any questions about that, we can certainly raise that in common and question, I think. So if you'll allow it to stay on the calendar, then we will go ahead and try to address your questions. Is that all right?
Okay.
All right. Any additional members of the public wish to identify specific items that they would like to have removed from the calendar or wish to have questions addressed? There be nothing further then from members of the public. The calendar is affirmed to include all items B through items E seven, items B through items E seven. And we now turn to members of the council and see if there are specific areas or comments, questions that you would like to forward.
Questions, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a question on, or comment on five and a question on seven.
Okay. E five, E seven, and IV? Any additional ones? Well, certainly, I'd go for E six as well. So comment, opportunity to comment, question about items E five, six, and seven. Any members of the public wish to identify a particular item that they would like to have the opportunity to comment or question upon? Any requests from public regards to comments or questions? Again, I want to remind everyone that calendar is affirmed to include all items B through items E seven. Opportunity to comment, question? Final request from members of the public. Any further requests then from public? We'll go ahead and proceed with our comments or questions. First opportunity was on item E five, raised at the request of Councilwoman Larson, UDO amendment. Maureen?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, this was something that I had requested be considered, and I appreciate the, the help from staff and the planning commission and the consideration of it. It's, as in any time that you're trying to foresee what could possibly be, you know, considered or tried, it's very complicated to get that language put together, and I don't think I realized how many layers and how many factors were going to have to be weighed and put together. And I think I really appreciate staff's help and Nancy's work on this and the planning commission, and I hope that it's a workable, enforceable thing, and I do think it was important to try and get in front of that, that signage, the electronic signage and how bright and those are used. So I appreciate the attention to it, and let's hope, hope it is a manageable, manageable ordinance, I guess. It sounds like there's some things going on on the springboard that affect the ordinance overall, so I think it'll probably be something that we look at on an ongoing basis, but I do appreciate the, the time and effort that was spent on it.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think this took an enormous effort to go through the depth and breadth that was necessary on this particular ordinance. We've had an ordinance for quite a number of years now, and I think it's been very positive, but this was the first time that I think there's been a real in-depth review of multiple areas. As you indicated, there is this court case with the Reed case, and we're going to have to kind of see how all that works out, but at the same time, I think there's been some effort to at least acknowledge that. The second thing that we took a strong look at was the electronic signage and the brightness of that, and what part of the community that might be in, et cetera. So I think that that was valuable. The second thing that we took a strong look at was the yard sign context, and it's kind of how they might be used and where they might be used, and if there are limitations to that, and yet at the same time, also protecting individuals' freedom of speech and right to, to speak under political commentary or other commentary than that. So we needed to make sure we brought all those types of things in and consider others. So it was not an easy task, and I concur with you. I think it was very important that we did it, and I appreciate the incredible effort. Any other comments or questions that anyone might have on that? I, UDO. Any members of the public wish to address the city council on the UDO, adoption of an ordinance approving text amendments to Chapter 13 of United Development Ordinance? Opportunity to comment or question? Very, now I'm done on that. I will move to the next one, and this was item E six. Carol, you requested that this be removed, and this is the opportunity to be able to utilize some of the facade improvement funds for 100 through 108 North Benton, 105 through 107 South Jefferson, and 216 Main Street. Do you have specific questions that you wanted to address on that, Carol?
I just wondered if any of that was in the historic district? And if so, will you be changing the appearance of the Benton Street buildings?
Okay. Nancy, are you in position anything? Come up and address that question for us, please.
Actually, all three of those projects are in the historic district. The, the Jefferson Street address, the correct address is 105 to 107 North Jefferson.
Thank you.
See, I was a little inconsistent. It will, it will, the project on the Benton Street side removes a cornice above the storefront that was installed, and I think it was the early 1990s. So yes, it will change the appearance of the building, but it's not removing any historic fabric. It's actually bringing it back closer to the appearance that it had for several decades.
Okay. What about the other ones?
On the Jefferson Street side, it's an awning project and some copper gutter that will improve the appearance of the building, also again, not affecting the historic fabric on the building. And the Main Street is a clock rest, the Red Wolf Jewelers clock restoration, and that is maintaining a 1940s or 50s clock.
Okay, yeah.
It's not.
So I think, Carol, the effort was to certainly maintain the look and in some cases to improve the historic nature of the building.
And that change, yeah, all right.
Does that adequately answer your questions? Carol?
Yes.
Council, any other comments or questions you may have on that item E six facade improvement and approval of the allocation of facade improvement funds for 100 through 108 North Benton, 105 through 107 North Jefferson, and 216 Main Street? Any questions, comments from council? Turn to members of the public and see if you have any questions or comments that you would like to add to the dialogue on item E six facade improvements. Final opportunity for members of the public to raise comments or questions with regard to item E six. There be no additional questions or comments then. We move on to item E seven, Sheriff's House Historic Marker, and Maureen, you asked the opportunity to question or comment about this.
Yes. First of all, I wanted to thank Kathleen Spaltwell.
You're welcome, yeah.
Yes, okay. I wanted to thank you for your work on this and the efforts that were made. I thought that the language that was actually arrived at was, I guess, a little maybe disjointed. The, the second, or the third sentence, the confiscated prohibition era evidence was stored in the basement, seems kind of out of, just out of context, and some of the other facts that you had uncovered seemed maybe more interesting than that, so I just wanted maybe to take a second look at the language.
Maybe I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll make that decision. Thanks.
My name is Kathleen Spaltwell. I live at 143 Lawrence Avenue, Woodstock. Can you hear me easily?
Thank you.
I have severe deafness, so if I'm talking to anybody, I will probably approach you so that I can see you and make your looks more easily. The origin of this project was that the Illinois Labor History Society asked me if I would help with applying for an Illinois State Historic Marker for the old jail to commemorate E.G.B. Debs's time limit. And so I got in touch with the Illinois State Historical Society, which is the nonprofit that applications go to, and the nonprofit that decides about whether to accept the application for the markers. And they very much wanted to have a Debs marker. So at that point, I started working on this project, and Woodstock Celebrates Incorporated is also supportive of that, and approached the Advisory Commission for the old courthouse and the old jail for a letter of support for that, and we went through that process with them. And so Nancy Baker and I have been working on the language for some time. Now, the criteria for acceptance by the Illinois State Historical Society are that what is on the marker would be of national or state importance. There are four points of national importance that are associated with Debs's stand in Woodstock, only one of which is in the language that is being submitted tonight. There are four. So my personal opinion is that the language weakens the application and probably dumbs it. The four points of national importance are these. The public strike itself of 1894 was probably the most important event in U.S. labor history. It's, of course, took place in Chicago, but also in 27 states and involved a quarter of a million workers. It paralyzed the railroads. That's point one. It was an event of national importance, permanent importance in U.S. history. The second point is that it led almost immediately to the establishment of the National Labor Day, because a couple of anger at governmental handling of the strike was so great that President George Hoover Cleveland almost immediately instituted the National Labor Day within, I think, about a week or two after the strike. That's the second point. Third point is that Debs and his co-leaders of the American Railway Union, which had shepherded the strike, which had involved many other unions besides that, besides them, were charged with both criminal and civil charges. The criminal charges were dropped when it looked as though the defense was going to win in court, the charges were dropped. The civil charges went all the way to the Supreme Court, and in the unanimous decision in 1895, Emory Debs, the U.S. Supreme Court, fought against Debs and his counsel, who included Clarence Darrow, who included Lyndon Trumbull, who had written the 13th Amendment. So Debs lost, and he came here in 1895 for six months stay. That Supreme Court case ruling, unanimous, decided they were law for 40 years. So for 40 years, courts bulk strikes do injunctions. And in 1932, Congress overturned that in the Norris LaGuardia Act, and after that, courts could no longer break strikes through injunctions. So that's the third point of national importance. The fourth is that Debs, in his stand in Woodstock, became a changed man. He went from being a labor leader to being a national political figure, to being a founder of the American Socialist Party, and to being a five-time candidate for president. So that's the full context of the application. It is now, the language in front of you is much weaker, and probably will not succeed in getting a marker. So I think the language and my letter to Roscoe Stelford is more likely to get a marker for the city. I would also point out, besides the project of getting a marker, which would be wonderful for the city of Woodstock and for the building, the fact that there is now a Pullman National Park offers the city of Woodstock an opportunity to join itself with the Pullman Historical Event, which will be much more better known now that there is a national park that will be getting a great deal of publicity in the next few years. So it's not simply a matter of getting a marker, but putting Woodstock on the map as being associated with an event of national importance. So have I answered your question?
Maureen?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I don't know how we arrived at this exact language then. I assume there's, there's been a lot of effort back and forth to get to this, I assume. I just thought it was, it just didn't quite tell the story in the way that had the interesting facts, I thought, but I didn't know that about the requirements for national and state significance and things, so I don't know. If you want to just fill me in on how we got to?
Let me do that. I first heard about this, this last week, just before it was scheduled to be considered for this agenda.
Okay.
So that was the first that I heard about this particular effort. We did receive then, as you can see in the packet, some supportive letters, which were requested prior to the city learning about this. But nonetheless, we have some supportive letters in here, and it did go then to the Opera House and Sheriff's House Advisory Commission for their consideration. There has been some discussion going back and forth. Nancy worked then because she works with the Opera House and Sheriff's House Advisory Commission, with Kathleen to try to find some middle ground, if you will, because there were two different thoughts that were being bantered back and forth, not bantered, that's not a good word, but being discussed back and forth, certainly the element of Sheriff's House itself and also the Debs context. And so they were going back and forth. The marker, as you can see, is limited in the number of words that you can have there. And the question is raised as to whether or not it will be approved or won't be approved. It has a pretty significant amount of support for us to have something like that, but, you know, the words, I, I can't really speak to that. If you look at the McHenry County courthouse one from McHenry, McHenry, it doesn't seem to be as, quite as restrictive. Of course, that was in other times, so I don't know whether it's changed or whether it has not changed. But the effort was then to try to come to a middle ground, if you will, in terms of both the building and Debs, with the thought, in my humble opinion, that as we move to the future... the future, the idea is to attract and draw people in and then internally, in the building, you can add additional things. In the old courthouse right now, we know that we have that one display and I think those types of things could be dramatically enhanced to give much more information and definition to both the building on one hand, but certainly Debs on the other hand, so if that was the, that was the approach that was taken in terms of the, from staff, trying to take a look at this.
Would it be more appropriate for this to work right now?
Perhaps, Kathleen?
What is, what is your question?
He asked if it would be appropriate for us to pull this and postpone until a future time.
Off the consent.
It's off the consent agenda, we're really discussing this.
That is, but it's on the consent agenda right now, so we've got it, so we have a procedure we have to go through. Go ahead, please.
So we said a question and then an answer?
No.
There isn't a question. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was looking at this as an opportunity to tell a story that would be of interest to people coming by and I thought that the way, the way it's worded now was just sort of, didn't get all the way there and I just wanted to take a look at having it be the best wording and the most compelling story that it can be and I didn't think it got there, so that was all, that was why I was raising it, I didn't.
Okay, I appreciate that. Good. So the question before us, counsel, is, do you want to move forward with this particular item that is on our consent calendar right now, that basically supports? I would also draw your attention that in this whole process, we have been basically asked then to support the plaque to a tune of $1,700. There are individuals and the organization, as I understand it, who are also willing to contribute the application fee, which is $500, so really there's a total of $2,200 and so that donation is coming from individuals and the organization and I believe that that organization is, Wasack Celebrates.
And also the Illinois Labor History Society.
Very good, thank you. The Illinois Labor History Society, and so they would be coming up with a 500 application fee, then the city would be encumbered with the $1,700 for the actual marker, so.
I'm supportive of the plaque and I'm fine with the $1,700 and I just wanted to have it be the best it can be and I don't know, are we voting on the actual wording?
We are.
But the wording, maybe make this fairer.
The wording is simply the wording for the application. The Illinois State Historiker Society must approve the wording. So wording, I think, in fact, we're now extremely likely that there will be, have to be negotiations between the city and the Illinois State Historiker Society, which is very unlikely to approve the wording as it is now. But I would support leaving the item on the consent agenda, approving the application as it is with the wording that it has now, and then letting the city and the Illinois State Historiker Society work out the final wording. To me, that makes more sense than to try to second-guess what the Historiker Society will accept among ourselves, we're not the State Historiker Society. So it seems to me best if you would accept my opinion, to go ahead with leaving it on the consent agenda, get the application started, but I do believe that there will be negotiations between the society and the city about the actual final wording.
I appreciate that very much and I think that is a wise counsel for us and I think we could get it moving forward then and then we can work with the Historiker Society to try to perfect language, based upon your view.
Right, right. There's much, there's, this is very cryptic.
As Nancy knows, since we worked on a long, we worked on a 250-word plaque, there's a lot more in the story.
Right.
That example, there's a whole paragraph in the 250-word plaque about Sheriff Eckert and how he protected Debs from violence when he got here, how they became good friends, how the Eckert family was friends with Debs for 30 years, how he spoke very highly of the sheriff. There were some very famous people who came to visit Debs here, including the first labor member of parliament in Great Britain, Milwaukee socialist Victor Berger, famous newspaper woman Nellie Belai. So the story is a very compelling story. Woodstock could do a lot with this. And it seems to me that it's not just the marker, it's the association with Pullman. This is a huge opportunity for the city.
I agree with you 100 percent. I think that you've made some incredibly valid points and the story is very engaging, but it's also very complex or convoluted, not convoluted, but complicated. And so I think we want to make sure that through a marker, we're drawing people in to other parts of the building, I think, or other avenues or opportunities for us to tell the story, not just this story, but other stories. I think there's an opportunity to do that, so I agree, thank you.
Yep, so if we, I should have pulled it up, sorry, so.
No, it's quite all right. RB?
You are restricted to 100, you are restricted to 100 words.
How?
And it's $1,700.
Nancy, I've worked.
And it's paying costing $1,700.
The, the lot.
It's if, it sounds like you need 250 words to me, rather than just 100.
The plaque is too big, that's the problem.
Okay.
Yeah, there are two options, 250-word plaque and 100-word plaque, each of which would feature all of the sponsors, so it's a, it's a permanent memorial to the city of Woodstock, to Illinois Labor History Society, to Wasack Celebrates, et cetera. But Nancy thinks that the 250-word plaque is too large.
Okay.
We can re-vote on it at a time, with the, this is an application.
Right, we're asking ourselves if we're willing to support moving the application forward and also spending ultimately, if we are requested to do so, $1,700. So that's really the question on the table.
We'll have a chance to review the language, that's, or staff will.
Staff will.
Right.
Any other questions about that? Certainly want to open up the floor, see if anybody else, we appreciate Kathleen's input here and your hard work on this, thank you very much. I want to open the floor to anyone else who may wish to address the council on this particular item. It remains on the consent calendar. The reason it remains on the consent calendar is because we are not anticipating changing the action that is recommended by staff here. Any other questions, comments from members of the public? Final opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on this item. Again, this is the Sheriff's House Historic Marker. Any questions from members of the public? Counsel, I believe that has addressed the opportunities that you requested for commentary or questions on the consent calendar. Are there any final comments or questions, counsel, you would like to make? Any item on the calendar? There is nothing from council. I turn to members of the public to see if you have any comments or questions on any item that remains on the consent calendar. Second opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council with comments or questions regarding any of the items that remain on the consent calendar. Again, those items include all items B through E seven, again, B through E seven. Third and final opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on any item on the consent calendar, again, items B through items E seven. Questions or comments from public? There being nothing further from members of the public then regarding the consent calendar. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, we do have a motion for, it is a motion for concurrence, so that is called the roll. Cindy?
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilman Storzinski?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
I.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Yes, I have motion carried unanimously by those present and voting. Thank you very much, thank you all, appreciate it. All right, counsel, that takes us then to an opportunity for executive session tonight. So we request an executive session for discussion of personnel and appropriations exemption under the Illinois Open Meeting Act, five ILCS 120 slash 2, paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1, specifically that is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public.